All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April 22nd, 2025 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting. And as customary, we'll start out with a moment of silence. And I know Supervisor Spatia is going to read one.
Thank you, Chair. I want to have a moment of silence for Beverly Van Pelt. Beverly Van Pelt passed away at the age of 90, and she lived in Clear Lake Oaks, and she passed away in her home on April 12th, 2025. She was born in Hoplin, California on March 3rd, 1935, and was raised in Ukiah, California. She moved to Lake County in 1979, where she became very active in the community. She was a proud member of the Rotary Club of Clear Lake and once served as their president. She enjoyed going to church, gardening, playing the piano, and crocheting. Every grandchild, great-grandchild, great-niece, great-nephew has a blanket that has been crocheted by Beverly. And as you know, the Van Pelt family has been deeply rooted in this community with many different businesses, helping out in many different endeavors and projects throughout the community. And so today, we'll have a moment of silence and remember and severance.
Haven't I asked? All right, Supervisor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Weren't shy on that one.
There we go. All right, we'll move on to item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. And it looks like we have one, 4.1. Consideration of an extra item and B, consideration of long-distance travel by District 5 Supervisor Jessica Paeska to Washington DC to testify before Senate Banking Committee on the role of the federal government in insurance and disaster mitigation. Initially, we are basically taking this up to see if we will add it. And so Lloyd, if you had anything to add?
So in order to be taken up as an extra item for your board's consideration, your board must find a need to take immediate action, came to the attention to the county after the agenda was posted. And I think that's outlined in the board memo that was attached to this extra item packet. And so for your board's, also for your board's consideration, board may want to discuss it, take public comment, and then eventually bring it back to the board for possible action in the form of a motion.
Okay, so I could allow discussion about this first right now?
Yeah, just on the, could be, just to take it up as an extra item, and then your board may discuss the substance of the item at a later point in time.
Okay. All right. So if there's any, did you want to, anybody have anything to add on this?
I'll just add that, yeah, the invitation came after the agenda was posted, and the date of the Senate hearing is next week, and we don't have a meeting in between.
All right. Any other comments? And then I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to comment on adding this to the agenda. Zoom, no? All right, I'll bring you back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve adding this as an extra item due to the timing of the posting of the agenda and the need to take action prior to the next available agenda.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And we should take this up a little later then, and we'll keep moving on. All right. Next, we have a consent agenda. And as you know, consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial. However, anybody from the Board of Supervisors, DIES, or the public can pull one of these items for further discussion. So go ahead and see if there's anyone from the board that wants to pull one of these items. All right, anyone from the public? I'll open it up. Not hearing any or seeing any, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda, including items 5.1 through 5.5.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. Next, we have 6.1, which is public input. Public input is a time for any citizen to come up and speak for three minutes. Just know that any of the discussion that we have or that you bring to the board is not something that the board can comment at this time. However, we will either guide you to your supervisor or to the director and figure out a way to address the issue that you have. So with that, we'll go ahead and open it to the public.
Hi, Elaine Brown. Just a concerned citizen. I just want it noted in the minutes that I said this, but for quite a while, I've been concerned about the red lights that are decorating a place for sale in Cobb Mountain. And I just want maybe people that don't know in the community that in this month, we're putting awareness on human trafficking, that we don't want to set the stage, I feel as a concerned citizen, for looking like there's prostitution going on. And it does resemble a red light district. And I've talked with the realtor, I've talked to several people about it, and the red lights continue. So I just think there's probably citizens in Lake County that don't travel that way and don't know that that's going on. But there's five distinctive red lights. There used to be seven, two of them have turned white, and they're right there in Cobb, one of the main thoroughfares up here. And in a, in an area where we're really trying to not look like we're doing human trafficking, and I'm not saying human trafficking's going on there. The realtor told me they're doing it for effect, y'think. And so I just want that to be known, that we don't want to even appear like we're having that thing going on. I think that is a concern that we can deal with in a kindly manner. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the chambers? Someone on Zoom? All right. All right. Please unmute, and you have three minutes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, you can hear me. Okay, I am asking about the Old Long Valley Bridge.
Can you state your name for the record?
My name is Sterling. I am.
Sterling, is this Sterling Wellman?
Yep.
Okay.
Sterling Wellman. So I am requesting that we could put this on to where we can work on getting grants for the Old Long Valley Bridge due to the fire. Season's upon us again and again, one way in, one way out, and to find out that there is some damage done to our spillway on the Indian Valley Reservoir. So we have two, two hazards now going on for Spring Valley and only one way out. And then also, I would like to request to see if we can get it on the agenda about how Special Districts is handling the water after the 218 did not pass. A lot of us feel that Robin is, you know, doing abuse of power. She went back into paperwork and now stating that standbys are paying regular price plus $6. And in the meeting, I did send it to you, EJ, where she stated that standbys can turn their water on at any moment, and that is not true because we have people trying to turn on their standbys, and now she's telling them that they cannot. So I'm just requesting from the Board of Supervisors that we can actually look into this because I did send Eddie the information, and it showed him through each one of those public hearings that we did, where she had stated that it was 68 customers using 40%. Then she changed it to what it was a year, then she changed it on each one of those. So I'm just requesting for the Board of Supervisors to look into this and maybe do a public hearing to where us as a community can figure out what's going on with our water and why we're being charged the way we're being charged. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public input and move on to the next item, which is our 6.2 Pet of the Week.
Good morning. My name's Whitney. I work at Lake County Animal Care and Control. And today we have Oliver. He's around three years old and weighs approximately 68 pounds. Oliver is a brindled shepherd mix who loves nothing more than all the belly rubs in the world. He does great with both males and females in all sizes. He knows how to sit, roll over. Oliver is quite the gentleman and knows how to win the ladies over with his dashing looks. If you are interested in Oliver or any other pet, please come see us at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport, or call us at 263-0278. You show everyone how you sit, Oliver. Sit. Sit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have to bring that trainer to my house because I'm doing so well.
All right.
Belly rubs.
The belly rubs are easy. She falls over.
So next, we'll move on to our 6.3 National Poetry Month Poem of the Week.
Is it okay if I come up?
Yes.
I'm not reading.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning. I am Brenda Marie Jaeger, the poet laureate of Lake County. And thank you so much to the Board of Supervisors for celebrating National Poetry Month with us and having poetry here at your meetings. It's been such an honor, and thank you so much for supporting the beauty of poetry and the change it can make with its truth and its voice. If anyone doesn't know, a poet laureate is a poet in the community who advocates for poetry. And I'm always available. It's a free service that I do to the community. If anyone wants writing incorporated in any of the services that they provide to people in Lake County, I'm always available for that. So. And this, today, I wanted to read a poem that I wrote specifically for us here. April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I have a dear friend who has just gone through the court system and through a trial, and her abuser, her assaulter, was acquitted. So the jury failed to convict him despite massive physical, you know, visual evidence. So she actually personally asked me to write this poem, and so, about her own story. And I feel like it's just good to bring awareness to the issues, to have education among people in Lake County. So when we show up as jurors in a court trial, that we're able to provide justice for the women and children who are suffering in our county. So the only other thing you need to know about this poem, the world, the word kintsugi is in the title. Kintsugi is the Japanese art of repairing broken pottery. When you do kintsugi, you take the shards, the broken shards, and you run gold lacquer in between them. And when it hardens, it becomes a new vessel. You're shaking your head, you know what I mean? So you end up with a broken vessel with these gold veins running through it. So she asked me to write about her as a survivor. So this is kintsugi, or Things I Want to Say to the Jurors Who Did Not Convict My Friend's Abuser. One, freckles drowned in a swollen purple tide. Two, peach curve of her cheek, skins tear just as tenderly. Three, blonde is not a crime. Four, was there a time before you got to feed the kids breakfast that you bit your own lip so hard that you needed stitches? Is that even a thing? Five, a new suit worn with a new tie at court is not an alibi. Six, there is only one way. A face shatters sharp as a fruit bowl against the corner of the bed frame before a woman even gets to feed the kids breakfast. Seven, please open your palms where I will place evidence, a few shards of her, so you can feel the weight, the splendor seeping through the cracks. Eight, a southern accent is not a crime. Nine, in a home video, a loaded gun should never appear against your temple. In a home video, a loaded gun should never appear against your son's temple. Ten, an abuser's mother can never speak to what happened behind the shower curtain in another house in another town before a woman even got to feed the kids breakfast. Eleven, was there a time someone held a loaded gun to your head, and it was not a crime worthy of conviction? Twelve, the fracture of her voice in the 911 call not yet hardened into gold. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, is there anyone that would like to comment on this poem?
Elaine Brown, thank you so much. And I want to let you know why I'm so adamant about red lights and the appearance of evil. Because when I was 18 years old, an adult by legal age, I went off to Europe with a music director 70 years old. And he was known to be what he was, and no one warned me. And there's only one person on that whole time, there was 45-year-old woman, who asked me if I needed help with the situation. And at 18, all that happened was that he would want me to kiss him on the lips and hug him. Now, I was extremely innocent and naive at the time. And his wife knew what was going on, his 30-year-old daughter saw what was going on, and a whole busload of women knew what was going on in girls. And this happened. And it was at the fifth week of this six-week ordeal that I finally told him, no, and knock it off. And again, all, that's all that happened. And I was 18 years old. So think about a two-year-old, and I often do, who's done the most heinous acts of sexuality against them. And that's why I speak up so loudly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the poem? All right, I'll bring you back to the board. We'll move on to our next item. A 6.4, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2025 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lake County. And Vice Chair Rasmussen will read this proclamation. If you're here for this, please come up and stand with Vice Chair Rasmussen.
A proclamation designating April 2025 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas the month of April is dedicated to increasing public awareness and understanding of alcoholism and misuse, its causes, effective treatment and recovery, and whereas excessive alcohol consumption is a significant public health concern, contributing to numerous preventable injuries and chronic diseases. It impacts adults and youth of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds. And whereas the entire community plays a vital role in supporting those struggling with alcohol misuse and addiction while promoting a culture of modern moderation and responsibility. And whereas education and prevention efforts are crucial in reducing the stigma surrounding alcohol use and misuse, and encourage individuals to seek help when needed. And whereas in the calendar year 2024, Lake County Behavioral Health Services provided DUI program services to 563 participants, assisted with 566 substance use treatment service requests, and offered treatment service to 256 individuals. And whereas in Lake County, 22.3% of youth aged 12 to 17 have engaged in binge drinking, a rate more than five times the state average. And whereas the Board of Supervisors and Lake County Behavioral Health Substance Use Disorder Services urges all community members and organizations in Lake County to participate in activities and events aimed at educating themselves and others about the dangers of alcohol misuse and addiction, and support initiatives that promote healthy lifestyles. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake, join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services to hereby proclaim April 2025 as Alcohol Awareness Month in Lake County, passed and adopted this 22nd day of April 2025, and signed by our Chair, E.J. Grandl. I just want to thank you all for your, your work in this area. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you. Hello, I am Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. And I think this is the first year that I recall that we had young people up here for this proclamation, and that's really exciting and fun for me. I remember being a young person and making some really awful choices, a lot of them that involved alcohol use. And, you know, especially for young women, and I see young women up here, you have to really be safe and take care of yourself. And so you're up here being leaders and showing that you can have fun and like do cool stuff without that. So thank you for your willingness to come up here. I will stop talking directly to you. Thank you.
My name is Richie Okino. I work for Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I wanted to talk a little bit about alcohol and it being Alcohol Awareness Month. I'm in the school system every single day, right? And I'm, I'm dealing with students, teachers, staff. And what I've noticed over the past two and a half years is that alcohol consumption from the ages of, now, it may not be everybody, but from seventh and eighth grade on through high school is like, depending on which household you're coming from, and I would say it's a pretty high percentage for my liking, it's normalized, right? And so when a student in eighth grade tells me that my parents would rather me get drunk at my house than out and about, I understand that concept. I understand that thought process. But I also understand the education and the knowledge behind what happens to you if you're under the influence of alcohol. And let's be honest, if you're one of those parents, when the kid is 16, are they gonna say, I'm only gonna get drunk at the house because it's been so normalized? And are they gonna stay when there's a party that everybody's going to? I'm gonna infer that that might not always happen, right? You might have a good kid. You might have been raised that way as an adult in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and the thousands. These kids are different. You know, these, this is a different day and age. And so I would urge some of you who do allow your students or your kids to drink alcohol on the premises of your house, to think about the consequences that could later happen, right? Because it is Child Abuse Awareness Month. Now, I might not be a person that may be popular for saying this, but it is a form of child abuse. If you want to look at it that way, I can give you a bunch of analogies. You're, you're supplying alcohol to a minor, and it is, it's poison. And so I want to reiterate that it's not the same time. It's not the 80s, 70s, 90s, or whatever decade you want to say. And so I would urge people to think twice about it because we're just living in a different world, right? And although I do want to say one more last thing, it is not Cannabis Awareness Month. Apparently it was last month. But what I do want to say about that is that if you are a parent that allows your kids to smoke as well, because that's another thing that I see in school systems, and I'm dealing with kids on a daily basis, because you smoked it when you were, whenever you were of age and you ended up okay, I want to be very, very clear when I tell you this, and this might not be the right terminology, but I'm gonna say it anyways, your weed was garbage compared to the students' weed that they get now. At a high percentage of THC of 70% or higher, because that's what pretty much all these students are smoking out of a vape pen, your weed on average was between 5 to 15%. Now, if you had knew an old person that was making bubble hash, then yes, you may have had a higher percentage. But on, on average, the weed's not the same. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber. I'm gonna look this way because we don't have many people out this way.
You all came up.
You all came up.
But thank you Chairman Grandle and the Board for acknowledging Alcohol Awareness Month. It's really important for us to come here and really highlight all of the different type of work that we're doing around alcohol in terms of prevention services, early intervention services, and treatment. If you look here, we have an array of that continuum. We have prevention services occurring. We have young people who are working hard around prevention. We have representation of early intervention services and treatment providers. We have to wrap our arms around alcohol awareness through all aspects because it's not just about prevention. It's not just about early intervention. It's not just about treatment. Everybody experiences alcohol, and it touches and it affects their lives in different ways. So that's why it's important for me to highlight that. And I'm so grateful for everybody who's here and who touches different aspects of people's lives. I did want to give an opportunity, Laura, did you want to say a couple words? But I also wanted to give an opportunity for our Senior Counselor, Paul Verhey, who leads our DUI programs and who will also be leading a grant that we just received from the Department of Healthcare Services and the California Association of DUI Treatment Programs. It's called the DUI MAT Grant. And it allows us, within our DUI program that we run through the county, to provide early intervention services to individuals who may be also experiencing opioid and polysubstance use.
This is our third award, right?
It is our third award, yes. They really like what we do in Lake County. We hear on a state level that we do an amazing job in our DUI programs. And we are very innovative in the way that we approach and treat people in those programs. So, Paul, did you want to say a word? Thanks.
My name is Paul Verhey. I'm a Senior Counselor with Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I oversee the DUI operations primarily. I apologize, I'm really still pretty shaken by the powerful poem earlier. I'm glad I wrote this down. First of all, most people are not aware of the fact that DUI programs across the state are mostly private and run for profit. I am proud that as a public agency, we can keep our fees low for Lake County residents. Not surprisingly, nearly all our beneficiaries were under the influence of the drug ethyl alcohol when they were arrested. Studies show that about 1 in 5 individuals receiving a DUI for the first time have an alcohol use disorder. So it's only 20%. But that number is 2 out of 5 for clients with more than 1 DUI. And those numbers double if we zoom out to 5 years down the road. So like our dynamic outreach and prevention team, DUI counselors seek to prevent and intervene early in the development of those substance use disorders. DUI is treatment. It's an opportunity to evaluate one's drinking behaviors against the backdrop of one's personal goals and values and to become motivated to change. Am I able to moderate? Am I happy with 1 drink a day? 1 standard drink a day for a woman? Or 2 standard drinks a day for a man, max? There's no such thing as no-risk drinking, but that would be lower risk. DUI can also be a portal to receiving enhanced care. And for our many Medi-Cal beneficiaries, the organized delivery system ensures there's no wrong door for that. Clients could take advantage of our in-house addiction medication program, MAT. And our MAT Grant will be really instrumental in bringing more people into those services, which we do up in Lucerne. Enroll in outpatient treatment with our SUDS team or transition to higher levels of care through partnerships with outside agencies like Archway Recovery Services. Thank you, Amber, for so much of this. I would like to contribute to alcohol awareness by sharing some statistics. In a 2023 study, 21.5% of Lake County adults self-reported heavy or binge-drinking behaviors. By contrast, 30% of Americans do not drink at all. Most people know that excessive drinking can damage the liver. Per capita, between 2018 and 2022, Lake County ranked first out of California's 58 counties in deaths due to chronic liver disease and cirrhosis, a rate of 42.9 out of 100,000. By contrast, the state average is 13. We are 6th in fatal car crashes per capita due to alcohol. At the federal level, the CDC estimates that excessive alcohol use kills about 178,000 US residents every year, making it the most preventable cause of death after smoking, high blood pressure, and poor diet. Tobacco ads are almost entirely banned, but nearly $2 billion is spent by the beverage industry every year. I'll finish up. Alcoholic deaths, which rose almost 30% during the COVID years and after, are slow and painful. I witnessed this personally in my mother this past year, who passed away. And I was born with a predisposition to the disease. I began my recovery from alcohol use disorder in 2010, but had numerous setbacks. Unfortunately, the shame surrounding my relapses and my limited exposure to treatment options kept me drinking. I got lucky. A local nurse with an addiction specialty recommended integrated co-occurring treatment, peer support, and medication. That cemented a lasting sobriety for me, and I'm forever grateful for his expertise and genuine care. I believe our SUDS team at Behavioral Health has those same qualities. Wherever possible, we are challenging barriers to recovery, including stigma and the old-school "one-size-fits-all" or "all-or-nothing" thinking that can interfere with harm reduction. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about our work to prevent and reduce harmful drinking behaviors in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll try and make this quick. I'm Laura Sullivan with Redwood Community Services. And I think we'd be remiss to talk about alcohol misuse and not talk about its effects on pregnant and parenting women. We know that the serious and lifelong consequences that come to both the mother and the child from drinking during pregnancy. At Redwood Community Services, we offer both residential services as well as now outpatient services. And outpatient services come with childcare for children up to the age of 12. So if you or someone you know is struggling as a pregnant or parenting person and needs support with their alcohol use, please encourage them to submit a referral through our website at redwoodcommunitieservices.org. Let this proclamation today be a powerful step forward, not just in raising awareness, but in providing real solutions. Together, we can build healthier futures, and we'll do that one family at a time.
All right, anyone else would like to speak? Anyone from the board?
I will. Yeah, I just want to thank all of you for coming today. We have a lot of different partners here that are doing this work together. You are out on the front lines, working on intervention and prevention and treatment. I know we also have another proclamation coming up right after this that talks about culture change and shift and modeling behavior. So I'm glad to see them working together. And so my comments are just going to be a little bit sandwiched in between. You know, a lot of us grew up in a culture where we really glamorized alcohol. And it's a lot of work to model better behavior and better options, especially for our kids and our families growing up, that you don't always have to have alcohol involved at functions or to have a good time. It's really important to be modeling that behavior too, especially when we've got family members battling with addiction issues too. You want them to feel welcome and involved and loved. Thank you.
I think it's always rough when culturally acceptable things can be absolutely so harmful, whether we're talking about tobacco or whether we're talking about alcohol. It doesn't just have the potential to hurt you as the individual with your health, but the outgoing consequences around your family, around your friends, around your community, whether you're driving and total strangers could have that impact as well. So it's difficult to overcome the hurdles that society has said these are absolutely normal things for you to engage with. And ebriation is a problem because you want to get back to that same feeling you had the first time you started, and that means doing more. And unfortunately, the more you do, the more harmful you become to yourself and others. And so it's difficult. I'm glad we have services that people can access to try to kick those bad habits because they are harmful. So thank you for all your work.
Supervisor Rowan?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for being here today. I know, growing up here locally, peer pressure was huge. And installing the strength in our youth and our young kids and letting them know that they have the strength to say no. Because it's much easier to say no when you're young than it is once it gets a hold of you. So having that courage and that inner strength to ignore the peer pressure and not give in to it, that's huge. So I applaud you. Thank you.
Yes, appreciate this proclamation, and I appreciate all of you speaking, especially you giving the insight about in front of children and whatnot. Grew up in a home and a generational alcoholic family. And then, of course, in the military, it enhanced problem-solving skills for me. It weren't just to run to the bottle, that's all I knew. And so this year is 9 years sober for me. It's a good thing for me because I'm so glad that I am sober because every time I go to like a RC or CSAC, they just like, it's like open bar. Like, and I'm like, man, it's a good thing, you know? Because, you know, but, you know, the little part of me in the back of my mind's like, "Man, where was this 12 years ago?" But then again, I would have been a fool, right? And that's what led me to wanting to stop, was being a fool, because that's what it did. It never ended. It kept more and more and more. There's like an image that people had put out before that there's a bottle with a hook in it, and that's what it is. And it ruins relationships with families. There's a dysfunction that comes in place, and that perpetuates in your family dynamic. And it takes so much more. When you go through the programs and you have to take accountability, you also have to undo all of the bad habits that you taught to others around you, especially children. So again, I'm glad we have this, and I just wanted to share that with you all.
Is there anyone else from the public, maybe, that...
I know I've spoken on this before. I didn't know the level of strength that marijuana now possesses because I came from the time right after the 60s as a child, and we were highly educated on why not to start with the gateway drug of marijuana that was taught to us in schools. And it is a gateway drug. And as you make policies up here, think of those children who now, because it's been legalized, President Obama legalized that, it gives one less step for children at a party to say, "Well, it's illegal." And that's actually a safeguard that used to be there for people in my generation. So it's very hard. You can get up here and say, "Oh, it's easy to..." It's not easy. When you're with a friend, and I watched my cousin go through the 60s and really get hooked, but they didn't know the damaging effects of that. So we learned, and our parents made sure we knew. But it is a gateway drug, and we are promoting it in this community. And I really want to implore you, as you make policies, to think of these faces. And that's just a symptom of what's wrong in this community. Find out what the actual cause is. Give them more opportunities to do fun things because, like when the supervisor said, "If you have happy things to do, you won't choose that route." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom or anything? All right, well, thank you again, and we will definitely get this picture.
Sorry, I've been waiting for the right moment.
Hold on.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yep, that's it, that's it.
All right, next is our 6.5, "Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2025, Be Recognized as California Friday Night Live Month." And Supervisor Sabate will be reading this.
I want to thank Mr. Okino for engaging with our youth to talk about these important topics, give them the opportunity to have leadership experience and to potentially make changes for not only themselves, but for their peers as well. We talked about peer pressure a little bit earlier in the previous proclamation. I apologize, I think peer pressure is probably worse than it's ever been. You don't even have to go to school to engage in peer pressure. You just have to be a part of social media. And that is a new construct that impacts your lives like nothing that I think we've ever endured during our youth, at least. But here, proclamation designating April 2025 as California Friday Night Live Month. Whereas, the Friday Night Live program was established in 1984 as the model program for the state of California in engaging young people as active leaders in their communities to reduce underage alcohol use and address other challenges faced by their peers by building partnerships for positive youth development. And whereas, Friday Night Live ensures that youth partners from grade 4 through 12 benefit from their continued growth and enhancement of this youth-led, youth-driven program and the unique opportunities it provides. And whereas, youth in Friday Night Live programs experience an environment that provides for physical and emotional safety, which allows them to express their authentic selves. And whereas, youth participants learn about their communities through participatory action, research, and meaningful engagement with stakeholders, leading to positive connections and interactions that contribute to healthier environments. And whereas, youth leaders in Friday Night Live programs have opportunities to participate in decision-making processes, express their opinions constructively, hear those of others, and take action on issues they are passionate about. And whereas, participants build caring and meaningful relationships with their peers and adult allies that support a sense of belonging and correctedness to their school and broader community. And whereas, youth partners experience opportunities to engage in relevant skill development activities that build resiliency, establish healthy attitudes and behaviors, and fosters academic success. And whereas, Friday Night Live create environments that prioritize youth partners' physical and mental health and social-emotional learning, contributing to a young person's overall well-being. And whereas, during the month of April 2025, Friday Night Live youth leaders in 53 counties throughout the state of California will highlight their efforts to prevent underage drinking, gambling, and tobacco, cannabis, and other drug use by mobilizing their communities with a unified call to action. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors join with the Lake County Department of Behavioral Health Services to designate the month of April 2025 as California Friday Night Live Month and applauds Friday Night Live youth leaders and their adult allies who are committed to improving the quality of life for present and future generations, passed and adopted this 22nd day of April 2025, and signed by our Board Chair. Am I introducing my daughter to speak next?
Yeah, she'll talk a little bit about what we did, and then I'll come up.
And I needed to embarrass her at least just a little bit. Sophie Sabatier.
Okay, thank you for introducing me. I'm Sophie Sabatier. I'm a member of the Friday Night Live Club. And this past year, we did a project for Spread the Word. Spread the Word is a community-based project to reduce underage drinking by informing people about the about the consequences of supplying alcohol to minors. As part of the project, members of the Friday Night Live place labels or hangers on alcohol beverages, containers in the store to remind customers that it is illegal to provide alcohol to anyone under the age of 21. And also, last week, we were at an event where we got people to sign pledges promising to not supply alcohol to any minors, their kids, any children. And that's what we've done so far. Oh, we got 100 pledges.
So I have the privilege to, oh, thank you, board, for allowing us to be here in such a timely manner. It was the last minute. We really truly appreciate it to give these kids an opportunity to be unshy and speak here in front of the whole county on Zoom. They didn't know that, but I'm letting them know now. So part of this club is to get them to advocate for change, become leaders, and it's not going to be, that's not going to be for everybody. Everybody's not going to be a Bruno Sabate and becomes the board of supervisors, right? But I think this opportunity for them to be shown what they're doing, they, at times, they slack off, they're kids, right? It was really, really hard to get them all to get this signed signature, to get this permission slip, believe me. Multiple times we tried this, but when it's time for them to show up, they have shown up, right? And that is really what matters. We meet weekly at the school. We've been blessed to be able to come in and find two rooms where we can meet, because they have two different lunches. And the overarching goal for Friday Night Live is basically just have a safe space for kids to grow and cultivate, opportunities to learn things when it comes to substance use, prevention, specifically alcohol. We got, as anybody understands, grants, and you're supposed to meet grant deliverables, and that is why I want to give a shout out to the youth, because they have, they wait till the last day of the month, but they've met all the deliverables so far, and I am very, very proud of them. Because like we've said, saying no to a normalization of tobacco alcohol use and being a club that is specifically for substance use prevention is, it's not normal, right? That's not normal in our community. And so it is normal, it's 53 other counties, they have this club. And so I really want to give a shout out to them for showing up, being brave to come out here and be vulnerable and be on the stage. And then thank you, Sophie, for speaking. So the knot on my pledge watch, right, we partnered with Foods, etc. I want to give a shout out to Foods, etc., Clear Lake. They always show out for Lake County youth, Clear Lake youth specifically, because it's in Clear Lake, but I'm sure they would support other people if they could. That's just the type of people they are. And they allowed us to come in and do this, right? And so we came in and we put over 200 door hangers, 200 stickers reminding consumers that it is against the law to supply alcohol to minors, right? Because a large portion of people are getting their alcohol from just shoulder tap people, right? And so there's, we've been, we were granted by the Office of Traffic Safety a grant to do this. And so they, we did it with Foods, etc. We also partnered with Clear Lake Grocery Outlet. We're going to be doing that visit sometime in June. So I implore everybody to support local community businesses such as them, as they are really, really opened up their doors and allowed us to come and just basically hijack their alcohol section for about 35 to 45 minutes. And while we put them on there, we're going to make a video, and we'll tag Lake County Behavioral Health Services in it, and hopefully people will go and re-watch the video and give them support, right? Because all those likes and shares matter, and we really appreciate it. The other thing is, I want to say is that we are trying to break the record for 100 pledges. We will be at the Child Advocacy Walk. Some of these students will be there on Saturday, this Saturday, in Austin Park. So I implore community members in Clear Lake to come out and ask about the parent pledges. We would much, very much appreciate it. One last thing, I want to thank Amber and Elise for allowing me to love my job so greatly. I am, I couldn't have asked for a better place to be at. Lake County Behavioral Health Services is definitely community-driven, client-centered, and we just want to help people, right? And so I want everybody to understand that the people that I work with, the people that are working with the Lake County Behavioral Services, they truly care about the community. And we do this because we want to see sustainable change. And if that wasn't the case, we would get successful and leave, right? And that's usually how low-income communities don't ever change, right? You got homegrown people that get degrees, go off to college, come back and visit, and then leave, right? And then they take their degree, and then they go make their life somewhere else. And so one thing I can say is that that's, we're trying to change that here, and I'm going to be one of those people that does that, as I'm going to get the highest degree as I possibly can, and I'm going to stay in this community, and I'm going to try to make sustainable change for the youth. I have a house here, and I'm trying to be a role model for my parents, for my kids, and for all those kids that I have actually get to converse with on a daily basis. I would not change my job for anything in the world.
I have a question. Wait, 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 what's the record? What's the record you're trying to break?
What record? Oh, so we had 105 parent pledges. We posted on social media that we were trying to get 200 before both of them, because it's a two-day event. So yeah, hopefully we get at least 150. That would be cool, because we have more exposure now.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Bring it back to the board.
Supervisor Sabate? So not everybody gets to grow up to be a Richard Okino. But are there plans for expanding this program to other school districts or other high schools? I'm grateful that you get to do it at Conacti Unified and get to impact not only my daughter, but I'm going to embarrass her as well, your daughter as well. But just, are there plans to expand?
Yes, actually, that's one thing that was on my list of things. Maybe I'll start bringing an actual list and stop just speaking off the cuff. Yes, Lake County Office of Education has reached out to us, and we are in the process of building a partnership with Lake County Office of Education with the hopes of expanding to an elementary school and a middle school as well. As time goes by, our ultimate goal is to be in every single school district from elementary to high school. There's even opportunities in colleges. This club has been around, this organization's been around for 40 years. And so there's ideally, you can go from fourth grade all the way to be 24, 25, and be involved with Friday Night Live. And so it is definitely, it's not going, that doesn't happen for everybody, obviously, right? But there is that opportunity. And the other great thing about it is, just so everybody knows, is like, you know, recommendation letters, right? Like, you're going to go off to college, some kids are, you know? And so getting recommendation letters from these people who all, they're across the United States now, you know, and they're senators, they're people that have went through the Friday Night Live Club that are now major people that are doing, driving their communities for change, right? And so that is the whole part of Friday Night Live, is making little leader, making little kids into leaders and becoming adults who change the world, right? Sustainable change. So I do want to give a shout out to LCOE. They allowed us to get these kids here today. And again, Anna Santana and her team, we're conversing with them to hopefully expand this next school year, right? But, and also another middle school, we were looking, we're looking at maybe Kelseyville or Lakeport. We just don't really know yet, but for sure, we're going to have another club advisor from our team that's going to do a middle school. And we are hoping to get one in elementary school and Obsidian Middle School. Obsidian Middle School and Lower Lake Elementary, those are the schools we're targeting right now. So you can ideally go from elementary school in Conacti District all the way through the high school, right? And of course, our ultimate goal, and which we will as we build the program and move forward and hopefully get more funding from the state, so we can expand to get more people. And once we realize, I'm going to go off on a tangent here, that prevention matters, right? And that once we actually stop spending money to treat and funnel some of that money into prevention, I think we would be a lot better off. But Amber has something to say here.
I just wanted to add a little bit more information, but thank you, Richie. The overall goal is that these young people do such an amazing job at prevention that there is no longer a need for substance abuse counselors anymore, right? Get rid of treatment. We don't want to treat anymore, we want to prevent. But I just wanted to highlight what Richie said. The funding that we get from the state for this program is barely enough to, it's barely enough to support one school. So the goal is to be countywide, be in all the school districts, and in every level of school, high school, middle school, and elementary school. But behavioral health can't do that alone. We really need to leverage our partners and individuals with other funding streams or opportunities or volunteer opportunities to help us do that. So I call on the community support to help us reach that goal.
Yes, come on up.
Hi, my name is Jack Smalley. I'm the chief building official for the county. And as a parent who has raised two magnificent children in this county, how do I sign one of those things?
Oh, the parent pledges?
Yeah.
This weekend, we're going to be at the Child Advocacy Walk.
Okay, I'll be there. And clearly, Austin Park, yep.
They will have their own booth there. They will be accompanied by another gentleman by the name of Daniel Russell. I won't be there, I hope he'll be out with Tom. But some of these kids will be there for sure.
Okay, good, I'll be there.
They're going to have pizzas, so they're coming for sure.
I'll be there. It's a great thing that you guys are all doing, you know? I'm sure I'm not the only one in the community that agrees that keep up the good work.
Look for the EPL booth.
I will, I will. I go to the things all the time, so. All right, you guys have a good day. Thank you.
All right. With that, go ahead.
Yeah, I, it's a great program. It's been around 40 years, like you said, and I remember after a really tragic collision in Middletown in the 80s, the program was brought to Middletown, probably Supervisor Owen remembers that too. And I remember going to those rallies and fun Friday night events, and just, that was the first time that I really started to see that there are, the shift in culture change, because at that time, it was very, a deep alcohol culture for high school kids. And so I think there's been a lot of progress over the decades, and I just love seeing the new kids come up every year and stepping into these leadership roles. You're doing a good job, Sophie. So thanks for coming today. I know you're missing some class, but I hope that this was worth it, and we really appreciate you. And I unfortunately can't be out there Saturday, but I would like to sign your pledge, if I can figure out how.
Okay.
It looks like, did you, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank Behavioral Health for their work and also the commitment of all the kids involved. And I do look forward to seeing the expansion into other schools and districts throughout the county. I think that's very important, and hopefully that will start happening. Thank you.
I want to say that I'm really proud of you kids. This is really cool. And you know, the cool thing is, seeing the peer pressure when I was in high school, and as Supervisor Sabate said, it is much harder today than it was when I was growing up, because you've got the social media. But what was really cool, I mean, a shared experience, is I was one that was too hard-headed to jump on board and do the substance and the alcohol. Later on, when I graduated from high school, I had some of the kids that were really partiers come up to me and tell me how much they respected me. So just remember, respect is something you cannot buy. Have respect for yourself, and don't be afraid to have the courage to say no. It's really important, and you will be so proud of yourself later, because you had the courage. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today.
Sorry, Paul Verhae, again, just one more statistic I want to throw at you. People, children who have their first drink before age 14, 47% lifetime prevalence of dependence to alcohol. After age 21 or after, 10%. Just wondering. That makes sense. And so I just want to applaud you all for making that stance to stay away and not drink, you know? It's, I appreciate you saying that stance, because I've been in communities where, you know, kids at like 11 or 12 are getting intoxicated. And so, and it makes it harder for the rest of the kids at school, obviously, you know? So.
And this is for all substance, right?
Yeah, pretty much. We just took a grant for OTS with the Office of Traffic Safety, so we're focused on underage drinking. But yeah, we're thinking about doing cannabis one next. Obviously, we're thinking about doing cannabis one. There's projects you can do, there's tobacco projects you can do. They have a tobacco project where you put one of these things inside of the bathroom, collect it after a week, and it will tell you how much smoke has been, how many people have been vaping in that bathroom.
Oh, wow.
I don't know how many schools it's going to be open to a lot of that, but they have wipes, like hypothetically, someone got murdered in a classroom, they were looking for a certain type of vape. They, you can swab people's clothes and get the empty vape, because people don't understand that vapes, this is another thing.
That vapes, some people smoke vapes in households, right? THC vapes, tobacco vapes, and it stays on contact surfaces for three to four hours. And so understanding that if you have a kid, even though they're not in the room, but they're in the next room, and they come in, and the first thing they do is pull themselves up on the, on that table, and they put toys in their mouth. They've done studies for Stanford where they're actually trans, tobacco, low levels of tobacco in kids that are under four or five, from, because they smoke vapes or tobacco in the house, right? And so that's just another thing that most people don't understand or think about, or they don't care, I don't know. But I'm assuming they don't really know, right? And so that's one of my favorite things I get to share with the kids, it's called third-hand smoke, right? And so there's that. But they have that option for San Diego State University, where they become little scientists, they go and hide the stuff in the bathrooms, and then they collect it a week later, all like scientifically, send it back to San Diego State, and they print up a report, and then they can present it to the school board. That's another opportunity that they can, that project that they can do. And then, believe it or not, everybody, there's a large amount of students that gamble in schools. There's a gambling project, right? And we're not talking about like a dollar or two. I'm in the schools and districts, again, I'm telling you right now, I'm not going to tell you which one, but I seen each student had $60 down on the ground flipping quarters, quarters on the wall, closest to the wall without hitting it. And so, and there's not chump change money, right? And so again, a big part of people's hustle there is selling chips and sodas, and they're turning around and using that money to gamble.
Yeah, I would just like to see it all, if possible, hitting all the bases.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, preventative measure.
Yep.
All right, Sam, you ready?
Yeah, let me come down here with the kids.
Yeah, that would be great. Why don't you come down and then, yeah, perfect, 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 perfect. Okay, we ready? If you're not ready, I have to try. Let me get one more. It's tripping. Oh, wait.
I think you got it.
We'll go ahead and take a five-minute break to 10:10. We'll go ahead and take a five-minute break to ten-ten. We'll go ahead and take a five-minute break to ten-ten.
Yeah, let me come down here with the kids.
Yeah, that would be great. Why don't you come down and then, yeah, perfect, 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 okay. Okay, we ready? If you're not ready, I have to try. Let me get one more. It's tripping. Oh, wait. Everybody else.
I think you got it.
We'll go ahead and take a five-minute break to ten-ten. All right. Sam, you ready?
I'll just, if it's all right, Chair. There's a public comment that came in, and I, I'm happy to read that right now. On this item, it says, "I would like to thank Thomas for all of his hard work in attending the town hall meetings and making them available for residents that are unable to attend in person. The time Thomas spends in setting up and taking down equipment, streaming, and posting videos online, in addition to running Zoom, along with all the behind-the-scenes work that the public doesn't see is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Thomas." And that's from Angela A. And I'll just add.
I think it's Angela Amaral.
Yeah, Angela Amaral, probably, that's what I thought, too. But yeah, it's, you know, we have a lot of absentee property owners that like to participate in the town halls. We have people that are homebound, we have people that like to watch them all over the county. So having that equitable access is really important, so I'm glad we're able to, to do that in a way that is, you know, equitable across the county, because before, we had some MACs doing it, some MACs not, and this is just a service that we can provide to everyone. So I'm, it's been a great year, so thanks for, thanks for doing it.
I appreciate that. I had not seen that we had received that public comment, so thank you very much for reading it. There, it doesn't, the, the, the work of covering the MACs doesn't come without some hiccups.
Yep.
We've definitely had some issues here and there. We've tried our best to rectify it as much as possible. I think purchasing our own internet access has greatly increased our stability in what we can offer. I do want to make sure, at least for the public, I know you guys know, if the town hall doesn't want certain parts of us doing things, like for example, I know the Middletown area town hall does not want Zoom. I know people keep asking our station manager, Thomas DeWalt, to have Zoom access and why not, and we only work for the people that are asking us to be there, and we're only providing what is being asked of us to provide. That is up to the town halls to make those decisions, if there are any changes. I know right now, we are, we are having a little bit of technical difficulties with Zoom, but we're going to fix that, and I know that, I do appreciate Sam Houston, he is available at times to take a look at things, and he's always looking at new technology as well, and looking to see if that can be implemented in our stuff. Let's go ahead and go to the next. So those are just the totals, again, just meeting the requirements of the contract to give a total of all the activities that we do. Future activities, there is a good conversation starting about how we can work with schools. We've always wanted to work with schools. Typically, it's been based on whether there's a teacher with a passion to want to work with AV stuff, but I think we're, we're on our way to getting some of that stuff going. We want to increase our operational budget by continuing to advertise on the work that we do, and how we can be hired to do some of the work available. We are, we wanted to do this last year, it's really hard to organize with the limited hours, but we want to start looking at doing commercials for nonprofits, to try and help advertise their programs, to help advertise who they are, what they do. So our plan is to do one pro bono commercial, just to at least show what can be done and our production value, and then go from there and use that as a promotion tool to get others interested. And our goal right now is to do that for Lake Transit Authority, and to work with them in getting that first commercial done. We want to obviously increase our viewers at all times, the more stability we have and predictability we have that we're going to be there, and that our videos will be available, that helps. We're still working on activating Lakeport PEG connection, and I'm glad that made me think of something. I do want to thank MediaCom. We had, I'm gonna say his not-name wrong, Michael Rutherford? Close enough? Brothers. And of course, most of us know Sean Swatash. Both of them have retired from MediaCom, and we have new, fresh blood, fresh eyes, and we're excited to meet with them. I believe the young gentleman that we last interacted with was Kevin, and he helped us out with some technical difficulties, and so, we hope to have Lakeport on by having that fresh set of eyes and extra motivations that maybe new people have when they don't know what, what the history of it is. We want to continue to pursue partnerships. One of the big things that we're hoping to do is, we're very interested in creating our own news show. Obviously, I would have to walk away, but I want, we want to create like a very old-school, here's what was done in Lakeport City Council, here's what was done in the City of Clearlake City Council, here's what was done in the Lake County. They have a new building here in Lakeport. We don't have a studio in Lakeport. We wanted to provide something in this area. So we're buying all of the equipment to start the ability for him to have a podcast. He'll do all the furniture, all the room, all the maintenance of the area. But that gives us access to a podcast facility and it gives access to the public for podcast-making capabilities as well as in that relationship, we would receive content that we can then post on the TV station and online. Part of our agreement that we have with our municipal advisory councils is to bring back to you the dates and times that we are out there doing the work. And so I have listed all the times. The total times on there are, if you look at our contract, it's setup time, it's recording time, it's breakdown time, and then there's some editing that is done. And most of the editing is only seen from what's being placed on TV station because when you click on a YouTube link, you have the title of it. It's a little bit more detailed than what you see rather than having to have it on the video. So there's editing done so that people can actually know what they're watching when it comes to the videos. And I do know that there may have been some questions regarding some of the times. So I do want to pause here in case that there are any questions from the board on this section.
I'll just, if it's all right, Chair, there's a public comment that came in and I'm happy to read that right now. On this item, it says, "I would like to thank Thomas for all of his hard work in attending the town hall meetings and making them available for residents that are unable to attend in person. The time Thomas spends in setting up and taking down equipment, streaming and posting videos online, in addition to running Zoom, along with all the behind-the-scenes work that the public doesn't see is greatly appreciated. Thank you, Thomas." And that's from Angela A. And I'll just add-
I think it's Angela Amaral.
Yeah, Angela Amaral, probably. That's what I thought, too. But yeah, it's, you know, we have a lot of absentee property owners that like to participate in the town halls. We have people that are homebound. We have people that like to watch them all over the county. So having that equitable access is really important. So I'm glad we're able to do that in a way that is, you know, equitable across the county because before we had some MACs doing it, some MACs not. And this is just a service that we can provide to everyone. So it's been a great year. So thanks for doing it.
I appreciate that. I had not seen that we had received that public comment, so thank you very much for reading it. It doesn't, the work of covering the MACs doesn't come without some hiccups. We've definitely had some issues here and there. We've tried our best to rectify it as much as possible. I think purchasing our own internet access has greatly increased our stability in what we can offer. I do want to make sure, at least for the public, I know you guys know, if the town hall doesn't want certain parts of us doing things, like for example, I know the Middletown area town hall does not want Zoom. I know people keep asking our station manager, Thomas DeWalt, to have Zoom access and why not? And we only work for the people that are asking us to be there and we're only providing what is being asked of us to provide. That is up to the town halls to make those decisions if there are any changes. I know right now we are having a little bit of technical difficulties with Zoom, but we're going to fix that. And I know that I do appreciate Sam Houston. He is available at times to take a look at things and he's always looking at new technology as well and looking to see if that can be implemented in our stuff. Let's go ahead and go to the next. So those are just the totals, again, just meeting the requirements of the contract to give a total of all the activities that we do. Future activities, there is a good conversation starting about how we can work with schools. We've always wanted to work with schools. Typically, it's been based on whether there's a teacher with a passion to want to work with AV stuff, but I think we're on our way to getting some of that stuff going. We want to increase our operational budget by continuing to advertise on the work that we do and how we can be hired to do some of the work available. We are, we wanted to do this last year. It's really hard to organize with the limited hours, but we want to start looking at doing commercials for nonprofits to try and help advertise their programs, to help advertise who they are, what they do. So our plan is to do one pro bono commercial just to at least show what can be done and our production value and then go from there and use that as a promotion tool to get others interested. And our goal right now is to do that for Lake Transit Authority and to work with them in getting that first commercial done. We want to obviously increase our viewers at all times. The more stability we have and predictability we have that we're going to be there and that our videos will be available, that helps. We're still working on activating Lakeport PEG connection and I'm glad that made me think of something. I do want to thank MediaCom. We had, I'm going to say his not name wrong, Michael Rutherford? Close enough? Brothers? And of course, most of us know Sean Swatash. Both of them have retired from MediaCom and we have new, fresh blood, fresh eyes and we're excited to meet with them. I believe the young gentleman that we last interacted with was Kevin and he helped us out with some technical difficulties. And so we hope to have Lakeport on by having that fresh set of eyes and extra motivations that maybe new people have when they don't know what the history of it is. We want to continue to pursue partnerships. One of the big things that we're hoping to do is that we're very interested in creating our own news show. Obviously, I would have to walk away, but I want, we want to create like a very old-school, here's what was done in Lakeport City Council, here's what was done in the city of Clear Lake City Council, here's what was done in the Lake County Board of Supervisors. If tribal councils want to submit stuff for us to discuss, we'd be happy to do that. Schools, we'd be happy to do that. We want to showcase what is happening in our community, maybe have one or two interviews. We're looking at potentially doing a monthly show just to get started and again, iron out the kinks. We have met with KPFZ. We'd love to also set them up with a podcast so that they can not only be on the radio, but also record themselves as they are doing their radio show. We also see that as a potential benefit, especially when KPFZ is broadcasting during an emergency where we can directly put stuff on PEG TV or on our website. So exciting potential and exciting projects that we're working on. And that is all for my presentation. I might have been over five minutes. I apologize.
Oh, you're good. Yeah, I'd like to just add, you know, I have three town halls and they go to them. Thomas goes. And, you know, it's improved so much. You know, there was quirks, little things that came in and I, being the person that had to do it before, like it's just, yeah, it was very, it was very challenging. And so this has just been such a big help. And it also, one of the things I think you mentioned too, Supervisor Pyska, is that people can be engaged because there are people that aren't around or they work. You know, I know that Clear Lake Oaks Earth has theirs at 4:00 PM. Well, you know, if it's recorded, people can look later at it. There's also ways to, well, I mean, what I've done is I've watched, if there's a key discussion that happens during that town hall, I'll record just that portion and then post it so people can see what was discussed or whatever the case may be. So, yeah, it's a very, very big help to get it out there. And people can engage, people can know what's going on for the next meeting and it really, it really plays a big role. So I appreciate that we're doing this.
Thank you.
I really, really appreciated it. It's- Sorry. I know that I've really appreciated it at the MAC. And then they actually came out and videoed a rodeo also for the kids. And I think that this would be something really cool to showcase Lake County a little more and maybe kind of hook up a little bit with the visitor centers and what's going on for people coming to the community as well as people that live here having better access to what is happening around the county.
Thank you.
It's been fabulous. And Thomas does an amazing job.
I don't know who was first.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Chair.
I just want to say I appreciate the work of PEG and Thomas and working with us also to get the Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council meetings finally online just two months ago. They were the last municipal council that wasn't broadcasting. So that will be a big help. Also, going by, I had forgotten that I did hire PEG when I was police chief to do that homelessness town hall meeting. And we had over 100 people that were able to, I believe, attend live broadcast in addition to what was there. So good work. I'm glad that we have this going.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was really, it's always been really important for the Cloughberry Council to have this broadcast and they were paying people to do it. And it was, it was quite the production. And it was, you know, these are all volunteers that were asking to serve and participate in these communities and to take that burden off of them, let them just, you know, show up and do what they volunteered to do and not have to also do a production. So the Starlink was critical because when we switched over to PEG, Zoom stopped working. So there were some bumps in the road, but it seems to be much better right now. We also frequently have presenters that are out of county that want to present to the MACs. And so we have a lot more flexibility for who they can have, who they can invite to the meetings and they don't have to necessarily make the trip.
I appreciate all the comments. My guess is that our station manager, Thomas, may just become one of the most knowledgeable county politics individual.
It's true. Whenever I chat with him, between the B-VAC is one week and the CIC is the next week and he knows everything.
Appreciate all the comments. I'll make sure that it gets forwarded to Thomas.
All right. Open it up to the public if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak. There you go. Very haunted. Tom Lysik, yeah, we try to attend all the area councils that we can and Thomas does a fantastic job. I actually have a question on the budget. You mentioned that MediaCom provides a certain amount and that is dropping. The national trend is that's probably going to continue? Is there a contingency if that trend continues on, you know, making sure that the program is funded? Because it is a great service. And relying on MediaCom with, you know, like the satellite, the Starlink type stuff and other companies competing, that funding might start to drop. So if you have any thoughts, it's just a friendly question. I was just wondering if you had any insight.
So what I will say is in the past year, year and a half, for the first time, PEG is seeing a revenue increase because of all the work that we've started doing and contracting with the individual agencies, including the county of Lake. That's why we want to start looking at producing commercials for some of our nonprofits. We want to do an exchange of whatever we're going to be losing from MediaCom, no matter what that loss is, and try to recompensate with other types of services that we can provide to the community. Trying to run PEG a little bit more like a business rather than we automatically receive funding so that in the long run, we'll be able to be self-sustainable rather than depending on the 1% pass-through.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Come on up.
Hi, Elaine Brown. I'm on the board and I just want to ask you some questions, Supervisor Sabatier, maybe what the public would want to ask because I'm still learning and I want to know these things, too. So there's so many opportunities. I mean, it's beyond, it looks like something beyond the sky, being not the limit. And so like community people who want to maybe start a YouTube channel and what would, where would they go? I know Kingdom, we were talking about Kingdom Games. And I mean, there's so many opportunities for the public to get involved. And where do they go to get activated? What are the prices? How do we get funded from it? It's probably what the board would like to know, too. And then like with the community, how could it, how could this, like with a local winery or a restaurant who maybe wants, they can't advertise. My understanding, you can't overtly advertise, but if a local winery wants to showcase what they're doing in events or weddings or different things, can they have a channel on PEG that showcases that? That way, they can direct someone that wants to come and have a wedding there. Oh, go look what we do on PEG. So it's actually helping them, but they're not overtly saying, here we are, here's, you know. I'm not quite sure even as I'm joining, what can a business do that I think is really wonderful to showcase who they are without actively getting it as a publicity-type thing where they can pay us, the PEG board, and everyone wins because they're showcasing this beautiful community?
And so I appreciate the questions because my presentation kind of highlighted more of what I would expect based on our contract with the Board of Supervisors was looking to hear. What you're asking is definitely important. Anybody who can create content, whether they have an iPhone, whatever phone, or even just a camera, if they produce content, they can submit that to us. We have very limited criteria of what would not be allowed, obscenity, pornography, things like that. You can't call to arms, things like that. But we are seeking content. We have found people in the past who were very dedicated to creating content. Those folks, that was their passion and when they're unable to do it, we end up losing our producers of content. We also have equipment that you can lease directly from PEG in case you don't have access to that equipment. Now, we do have some higher-end equipment and some lower-end. We're not offering the higher-end stuff for the lease, but we want to make sure people have access to be able to create content. And hopefully, once they get excited enough and get enough experience, they'll want to use our studios because even the studios are eligible for their use. Granted, we need to make sure that it's used appropriately. Same thing with the Kingdom Games podcast room. I should have a specific email address or contact information and I'm going to work on that. But I know that our station manager can often be found in the station at City Hall in the city of Clear Lake. If you walk in the front door, take a left before you hit the police station, take a right, it's your first door right there. We have forums on there on how to submit stuff or how to request for, how to submit content or how to request for equipment. But that is part of PEG is we want the public's content. We want to showcase what it is that you're working on. And as far as businesses, there's two ways. One is you can underwrite certain programs within the PEG station itself. So it's not a publicity where you're saying, come shop at our shop. You're just letting people know what you offer. But we also, I believe, can make commercials for you if you hire us and we just give you the video and you use that video however you want. We're not going to put that on PEG because that would be more of a call to arms. Come here, go shopping, spend your money with us. But we can provide the production capability to create commercials, just like any other commercial place would want to see in order to use that on their YouTube station, use that on their social media and spread it around however they would feel is the appropriate way to pass it around.
There's someone waiting behind you, so if you can wrap this up.
Just another question. Is there support? Like if someone that wants to start their blog or they want to do that or they, they want to do this maybe at their winery, is there technical support? Is that how, what's the fees? Do we have that in place, like how to do that?
We do not have an educational outreach at this moment in time. We would be able to link you to the right places where you can learn those things by watching YouTube videos or reading on certain areas, but it's something we can work on and maybe that's something you want to take on as a board member.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Good morning, Supervisors. Margot Cambara. Happy Earth Day.
Nice.
Kudos and thank you to the PEG, to PEG TV. And a special note of thanks to Thomas DeWalt for his service. And thank you, Supervisors, for your insight in bringing this public service to the public. It's great. It increases public engagement. And it's for people who are too busy and can't stop everything and to attend in person, to people who don't have a choice and are shut-ins. It's wonderful, wonderful to see this service. And I am encouraged by the energy and imagination to expand services for PEG TV, especially the news program. So I have a few questions. Will editorial content be truly independent? Or will the funder, say the Board of Supervisors, have editorial control or, you know, any influence on that count? And my other question is on the commercials for the nonprofits. Are the commercials, I think it being aired as public service announcements, so they're not charged for airtime, but they will be charged for production of the PSA?
So on the second one, it would be charged for the production, not charged for the airtime because nobody should be charged for that airtime. It's a public station. As far as the first one, I would steer clear entirely of asking for any government funding for a news show and, but at the same time, we do need funding. And so my goal at this moment in time, without having a master plan on how we're going to get this accomplished, is to, just like anyone else, go to our local community stores and see who wants to help fund to make that happen. And the funding is for equipment and the funding, to be honest, should be for the salaries of those who will be on the news show because their interests will wane if we're asking everyone to volunteer for those things. So our goal is to obtain funding from your typical sources, but not from government because then that would be a little awkward because they should not be involved.
Just a follow-up question to clarify. Who is going to have editorial control of the news program, though? Because if you have community funders or whoever your funder is, not everybody's going to agree. So if a funder says, "I don't like that, pull it or I pull my funding," could you comment on that?
I think that's a way in the future thought process of where we are currently, but I don't believe there is such a thing as a completely non-biased news show in this entire world, but we will do our best to set up a criteria to be as neutral and as factual as possible. And my vision is to even put links to source documents as to where we're getting this information from. So it helps people to follow up on getting further information than what we provide. But we will do our best and we'll, we would love to get your comments when we start doing what we're doing so that we can always get better because there will be some kinks to iron out.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other comment? Yep, Sam, come on up.
Thank you, Sam Houston here. A couple of things I wanted to say. One is it's really nice to see that the AV system or the portable system that PEG, because I actually put that together. And there was some significant resistance about it and it wasn't, and I want to acknowledge Supervisor Crandall for really supporting it. And then it took a little bit and then Supervisor Sabatier, we got him talked into it and it's, and it did. It has bumps because it's technology. And it's really done well, that providing that kind of system. And I really, I got to take a win. I personally take a win on that because it's what's needed in the community. And the other thing is I want to also acknowledge Supervisor Rasmussen, who was very instrumental in making sure that we could get reliable internet and as well as Paul Duncan, who is actually, who was the one who was the impetus to try to get us to work. I was very resistant about Starlink only because of the political stuff around it, but it works. And so Thomas took the, Thomas took the initiative and Supervisor Sabatier to try it and it does work. And so that's really great because it stabilized the system. And then Supervisor Sabatier, who's really, I really want to acknowledge you for taking on, working through the challenges that were going on with getting the system set up and getting it stabilized and making it a community resource. And also, I want to recognize Supervisor Sabatier for really taking on the vision of what PEG television can be. Having been associated with about four other PEG stations, I see the value of PEG TV to the community. And there was, there was a mention of how can you support PEG television? Become a member. That's how you can support it. It's $25 a year. It's nothing when you think about the service that it provides. And so if you want to make, if you want to see PEG stabilized, and that goes into the operation budget as well. So that's, and when you look at like the salary that Thomas is pulling, for that kind of position, if you look at the industry standard, you're looking at about anywhere from $100 to $200 per hour for a technician. That's just standard. And what we're paying, like what Thomas is getting paid is really peanuts. So when we look at that, we also have to look, look at the sustainability. If we want to attract other people to help support him, to help support the PEG, to help support Supervisor Sabatier, and I know I'm going over three minutes, but I'll be real quick. So, but those are the things that I want to push forward. And the other thing is there's something exciting that's going to be happening with PEG that is coming down the line. And, and we can't really talk about that yet, but, but what I can tell you is it'll be a really very beneficial community asset. So anyway, thank you very much for all your support for that because it is a very viable resource for our community.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, I'm closing public input, bringing it back to the board to close this out. Anything else to add?
Thank you very much, everybody, for your comments.
All right. Next, we'll move on to 6.7, consideration of appointment to Lakeport Fire Protection District Board of Directors, Vice Chair Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What the board has before them today is a consideration of appointing an applicant to fill a vacant seat on the Lakeport Fire Protection District Board. As you may recall, we were here a few weeks ago. As you may recall, we were here a few weeks ago and set to do these appointments. However, the recommended candidate withdrew from the process. So we went back to the fire board and they reconsidered the applicants and made additional recommendations that were forwarded to me to present to this board. Their recommendations included, out of the four applicants remaining, they recommended either Terry Cherny or Gary Diaz. I was involved in this process from the beginning and monitored the interviews. And with my knowledge of the candidates, I'm recommending to this board that we appoint Terry Cherny as the, the, to the open director's position for Lakeport Fire Board. Thank you.
Any comments?
I agree with the recommendation.
I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that has a comment? No hands in Zoom, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, with that, I would move that we appoint Terry Cherny to the vacant Lakeport Fire Protection District.
And I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 500.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. CIO, any recommendations on these non-timed items? Maybe the 7.3?
Let's, let's try 6.8 and just open it up and then continue it to a different.
Yes, we have 6.8, which is our consideration presentation by North Coast Opportunities Home Hardening Program. Did you want to?
Uh, we just, we have to reschedule.
Okay. So it looks like we'll reschedule for that.
For a date and time to be determined.
Okay, for a date and time to be determined. So what I'll do is I'll open it up for public input in case anybody wants to comment on this. Bring it back to the board and we will look for that date and time to be certain at a different time, to be determined. There we go. 7.3?
Well, let's go to 7.2, open it up.
Oh, yep, 7.2, consideration of following advisory board appointments, Mental Health Advisory Board.
We'll pull that item today and move it to a date and time to be determined.
All right, date and time to be determined. Open up to the public, is there anyone from the public? I'll bring it back to the board and we'll pull this for a later date, later date to be determined. 7.3? All right, consideration of the following advisory board appointments. Well, actually, should I do the extra item?
You can do this one.
Okay. Consideration of the following advisory board appointment, Glenbrook Cemetery District.
Yeah. So, yeah, I recommend that we appoint Patrick McCarthy to the cemetery district, Glenbrook Cemetery District.
Any comments? Did you have one? No? All right, I'll open it up to the public. No hands in Zoom, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we appoint Patrick McCarthy to the Glenbrook Cemetery District.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 500. Extra item?
Let's go 7.4.
7.4, consideration of contract amendment for Averro Advisors to continue the ERP HCM system implementation. And this seems to be like it's going to be.
We'll pull that item for a date and time to be determined.
All right. Any comments from the board? Open up to the public. No hands in Zoom, I'll bring it back to the board and we will pull this for a later date. 7.5?
4.1.
All right, 4.1. Extra item, consideration of extra item, be consideration of long distance travel by Supervisor Jessica Pisca to Washington DC to testify before the Senate Banking Committee on the role of the federal government in insurance and disaster mitigation.
I'll do it, okay. Yeah, so Friday evening, I received an email from Paragon that there was a possibility of this Senate hearing being scheduled for next week. This is a direct response to the request that we made when we went to NACO in DC. When I went with supervisors from Nevada County and Napa County, we met with the, the staff from the committee on both the majority and the minority side and talked to them about the federal government needing to take a role in, in the insurance crisis. And from my perspective in Lake County, we're using federal dollars to make communities more insurable, lowering the risk. And yet premiums continue to go up. So that was heard and they've decided to have the hearing that we asked for. So yesterday I met with some Senate staff members, had an interview with them. They were looking for a witness and it sounds like an invitation is coming. We haven't gotten it officially yet, but we've got some unofficial word that it may come. So it's still a little bit up in the air, but because this is for next week and we're not going to have a board meeting, I wanted to bring it before you. And it does align with both of our state and federal policy priorities that we have put with both the lobby groups.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I don't have a, a problem with this, but I do know that I'll be talking to NACO and CSAC about how they can help pay for these things when you're part of these groups.
Well, I can bring that up. So that's a discussion item. But if, and I talked to Paragon about this yesterday, if I could do that, but then I have to represent the CSAC and NACO platforms. And I would like to be able to speak more directly about Lake County.
And so that was going to be actually my second question. Again, I don't have an issue at this moment in time. But I feel like we have not had the conversation here at the Board of Supervisors regarding insurance and what our wants are. And I would love to have that happen ASAP. I don't want to prohibit you from going there and, and representing not just yourself and Lake County, but also all the work that you've been doing with CSAC and NACO. But I feel we don't have a group decision or a group direction at this point in time from the Board of Supervisors. And I think that's an important part that we probably should have that discussion. I know it's somewhat indirect to us because we don't do insurance, but it absolutely impacts our, hence the reason why you're doing the work that you're doing.
Yeah.
But I would love to see that come to the Board of Supervisors in the near future so we can have a unified voice on what it is that we are requesting from this board.
Uh, yes, so that, yeah, so there's a couple of pieces to that. So my conversations yesterday with the interview and with Paragon were more exactly what we've got in our policy priorities. So they want to hear the stories of what our constituents are living through. And that's what I'm going to tell them, going to tell Lake County's story. I can bring the work, we can do a presentation on the CSAC and NACO work, that's the policy priorities. But this is more, they want to know what's happening on the ground. So for example, I talked about how we have people that have rebuilt in burn scars up to the latest codes who are uninsurable. And that, they were like, what? And then we also have projects like the, you know, we have the home hardening project. We have federal dollars that are being used around communities. You know, Community Wildfire Defense Grant dollars, USDA grants. We have these federal grants that are used for putting in fire breaks and on egress and ingress and, you know. So that, that's really what I'm talking about more, not so much the CSAC and NACO work, just for everyone's awareness.
All right. Any other comments? I'll open it up to the public. All right, I'll close public input and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve long distance travel by District 5 Supervisor Jessica Pisca to Washington DC to testify before the Senate Banking Committee on the role of the federal government in the insurance and disaster mitigation.
I'll second that.
And this is once you get the call because it could potentially not even.
Right, it's still potential at this point.
All right, so I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay.
All right. And so what should we do?
7.5, please.
All right. Consideration of approval to update and revise the County of Lake internship program. And it looks like we have Pam Samick here to present this.
Good morning, Board. My name is Pam Samick, HR Director. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Irande Campbell, who's going to explain our updates to our intern program. Irande Campbell is a senior HR analyst in our department.
Good morning. My name is Irande Campbell, Human Resources Analyst. And I'm excited to share an update and revision to the County of Lake's internship program. So this program has been developed to support the needs of our departments and the professional development of students. When the idea was first presented and brought to staff, staff discovered that there was already an internship program in place. However, it was extremely outdated and no longer aligned with our current goals or standards. And for departments, it was difficult for them to actually acquire an intern because they, the intern would have to meet the minimum qualifications of the role. And they, with the current program, it just was difficult because it, most interns don't have the skills yet. So the purpose of the internship program is to provide meaningful, hands-on experience for students, build awareness for county government operations and service to the public, help students develop skills that will prepare them for future employment in public administration policy or related fields, create pathways for potential future employment within county government. So we believe that the internship program will create a lasting value for both the county and the students we serve. There is a lot of interested departments already. And if approved today, we're able to open recruitments. Thank you so much for your time and we appreciate your feedback.
Any comments from the board? Supervisor Pisca and then Supervisor Sabatier after and then Vice Chair.
And I'm sorry I didn't ask you these questions earlier. I got a little sidetracked yesterday. So are we planning on, and first of all, thank you for bringing this, Vice Chair Rasmussen, this is a really exciting program. Are, are we looking at providing internships for this summer?
Uh, we're hoping. You know, if approved today, yes. Because it will make, it facilitates the department to ask us to open a recruitment. So hopefully, I mean, if we start now, we might end up for like a summer internship at least.
Great, thank you.
You were next Supervisor Sabatier and then?
Thank you very much. I know that there's been a conversation happening over the past six months and I know Ms. Samick has been involved with some of those conversations where Yuba County, Yolo County, Calusa County and Lake County have been sitting down with leadership from Yuba Community College District. And that's not to say that that can't happen either with Mendocino Community College District as well. Not district, but college. Just to kind of get an understanding of what available programs could occur that maybe were in the past or new programs. And internship is kind of where we ended up the conversation going. And so one of the things that I talked to Ms. Samick about yesterday was we don't have a structured internship program that was identified necessarily through those conversations. It's still kind of open. But feeling that adding something to this document to make it available. And I know that Ms. Samick submitted some comments to me of maybe calling it a special academic internship program for our community colleges where it's part of their program that they're already a part of. And so I don't want to stop what's happening today, especially if there's the potential to get things moving and start the internship process of collecting applications for the summer. But I'm hoping that we can bring this back so that we can also identify some kind of special program internship that could be available through those other conversations that we were having. I, I don't want to speak for Ms. Samick, but I know when I called her after our last meeting, she was excited about the possibilities because we're not seeing that level of interaction with our community colleges. And we used to see that level of interaction in the past. And if you saw in the original revision or in the original iteration of this policy in the 2005, it was very specific about the work relationship between our local community colleges and the county. And not so much in this revised version. So hoping that either we can add it in there or pass it today with that coming back to us at a later time so that we can revise it yet again to make sure it's a, an available program.
Yes, I kind of purposely left it out due to budget constraints. But what we can do is to draft an addendum to this with the ability to look at this program based on the department's budget and interest. But go ahead and continue to work with the colleges and see what we can develop. And then bring it back for a more robust conversation when we know kind of what cost would be and, you know, what process we would put around this special academic internship program.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you for updating this and bringing it back. It was an important program to me for the exact reasons that you stated, that we want to, you know, provide educational opportunities and hopefully get local youth interested in these government jobs that we have available here in Lake County. So I don't disagree with, you know, update, further updates regarding the specific program with the colleges at a later date. But I would like to move forward with this today.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Rasmussen for bringing this forward. I think this is going to be phenomenal. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
And just a brief follow-up. I think this whole thing is always based on whether we have the budget or not. And so having options in there, I think makes it always a possibility to pull that option out whenever we feel like it meets that option. Because even the paid internship, that's only if there's something available for that. So looking forward to passing this today and looking forward to the next iteration as well.
All right, I'll open it up to the public for anyone. All right, come on up.
Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Wanted to first say thank you to HR and Supervisor Rasmussen and your board for supporting this. I think it's, it's important to note that, you know, at a grassroots level, to call a department, you know, at a grassroots level, I think this has been happening for years. You know, I had, had an interview last week with, for a potential, what we would call extra help at a college student who grew up here, still has family here and, and is, is attending college in Davis. We have another one next week for someone at UCLA, same, same issue, grew up here. So it's, it's putting, I'll say formality and a structure to something that already exists and that, that can't but help the county. I still really am encouraged at the notion of, you know, not just the, you know, the academic side, but the trade side. You know, the build program last week was, was here and that presents an opportunity. So anything that we can do to, to bring in, I'll, I'll say local, you know, local people who, who will stay, having worked here for, you know, longer than I care to, to admit now that I realize it, the, the long-term employees. It's really good to have them, have them homegrown. When they have a connection here, we have a higher, my experience is that we have a, a higher likelihood of, of the success rate, let's just call it that way, for them staying, the longevity increases. So anyways, thank you very much. I, I'm encouraged by this and appreciate the support.
Is there anyone else from the public? All right, I'll close public input and bring it back Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, just a quick question. I'm, I'm glad that Director Ewing spoke because I don't see anywhere here that you need to reside in Lake County. And it says currently enrolled in a high school, doesn't say a local high. So I'm wondering if that needs to be an additional thing to say you must reside in Lake County? Or is that unnecessary?
Yes, come on up Lars.
Sorry, I was crossing my legs, but I, I don't know that that was, I don't have much to weigh in on here other than maybe just commenting at a department level. I, I think the intent would be to have someone local. But, but I'll leave it to your board to, to decide the policy level of that.
I'm waiting.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we would want to use the language that they reside here because of the fact that maybe that currently it's not their legal address because they, their legal address is at a college, at a. they, their legal address is at a college, out of county where they're going to school, for example, but, um, but they're local and, and it, and they may intend to come back. Um, it's just, so I'm, I'm not sure about how to word that, but I definitely believe that we should be making every effort to focus on local youth, um, whether it's, uh, somebody that's in high school or, or that's out of high school, um, seeking, uh, education, whether it's a trade or college or, or whatever. I think in my mind, that's the intent that we'd want, we'd want to focus on our local people.
Pam, and then Supervisor Owen.
We can also say that we have a, a preference to give it to locals. That would allow us to expand it, um, just by, you know, adding an extra sentence in there, um, because there are going to be times when technically, you know, college in Yuba City or Woodland is not local to Lake County, but yet we're looking at, um, going into certain programs to encourage them for like, say, water resources, um, engineering, those types of things that we have trouble recruiting for. Um, so I think we can say we have a preference, um, to give it to local residents, but leave it that way so we don't close ourselves off.
Would the word alumni help with that?
Would the word?
Alumni, like graduated here?
Oh, alumni.
I think the, the local preference wording is probably the best.
I'm in agreeance with that, the local preference. That way it's discretionary, but it still kind of pushes.
Okay. Is there anything else to add? All right.
I think I'll move to approve the revisions to the County of Lake internship, uh, program.
Second.
Lloyd?
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. Would that be as amended with the proposed amendments discussed today?
With the, as amended with the proposed, we're talking about the language on the local preference, um, at this point.
Second.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just real quick, we kind of spoke about it, but what is the exact sentence that we're adding? Local, uh, local residents preferred?
Local preference. Pam, go ahead.
Local res- local residents preferred?
A preference to local.
Or a preference for local residents?
I think that, that would be suitable, I think.
Suitable for?
As stated.
Mikey? If I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Should we just go to closed session or do I, do we should we do calendars?
We need to go into closed session before noon. Um, we can come back out of closed session to do calendars or we could, because our, uh, one of our closed session items is a one thirty time certain.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna be going back in and out.
Um, we, well, if we did calendars, we wouldn't have to go back in and out. Calendar's is the last one.
We have to.
Do it really fast?
Yeah, we have to be brief.
Okay.
The calendars.
Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Go ahead.
I'm going to the CSAC ledge conference for the rest of the week. My calendar's over.
Oh. Next.
I'm gonna get mine up.
Ready? You got it?
Yeah, I've got it. Okay. Um, I have meetings tomorrow, I have three meetings tomorrow, um, Julia Sullivan and, uh, the drought with, let me see, on Friday, I know I've got other meetings on here, I'm just not finding them. I do have a, um, meeting on Friday. On Saturday, we have a bunch of Earth Day events. Um, we have Clear Lake Earth Day on, um, Saturday from, it's a cleanup day. Uh, I have to bring each one up. At Austin Park, it starts at eight AM. And we have, uh, the Middletown Lions Club starts at ten. They have a craft boutique, a local craft boutique at the Middletown Lions Club that starts at ten AM. South County Firehouse has a, actually, I believe this is their one hundredth year of having the local Lake County, um, or Middletown South Lake County Firehouse. So this is their one hundredth anniversary and it's also the ten-year anniversary for the Valley Fire coming up. They're going to be celebrating that. This, it's this year, but it's not until September, of course, but they are celebrating it this year. And we have Earth Day in Middletown at the Calpine Center. That's it.
Um, I will be at CSAC this week and, uh, my calendar next week is pending, all things.
Vice Chair?
Um, went to the Mike Thompson Business Meeting with the Chamber last week and also the Chamber Mixer the same day. Thank you to Supervisor Pyska for bringing me on the Home Hardening Field Visit. Although I was aware of that program, I, I wasn't real familiar with all the details and so that was, uh, very beneficial. Um, I had a meeting last week with Water Resource Director regarding some issues at Highland Springs. I also, uh, joined Supervisor Pyska, uh, thank you again, on the Coal Creek, uh, site visit, what's going on with the creek and some of the flooding issues out there. I met with Nancy Razika and arranged for her to have a meeting with Special Districts regarding concerns she brought to the board. Um, I had a radio show late last week and I have another one coming up this week on KPFZ. Um, I went to the, uh, Tribal Advisory Council, uh, meeting regarding the status of the Pomo family statue that's being built to go in Museum Park. And I understand, uh, Mr. Ewing will be bringing a, an update soon to the board regarding that project. I went to the Gleaner's Food Drive over the weekend, had week seven of the, of ten on the Hitch Survey. I have a Gwinoc Project Tour tomorrow, first five meeting, um, a tour of the Health Department. And I'll be involved in the several sea plane fly-in events over this, uh, this coming weekend and also attending the groundbreaking for the remodel addition at the Superease Theater that's, uh, getting ready to start. Um, and that'll wrap up my week.
All right. Um, so lastly, I'll cover mine. I just wanted to reference the joke that I made with Bruno, that eighties commercial when they give the checks to Mikey. But, uh, just all in good fun. But, um, tomorrow I got the North Shore Business Association meeting. Um, it's, uh, in Upper Lake. Um, I have the governing board meeting, uh, for AAA, um, RCRC Friday in Sacramento with , uh, P, uh, to discuss with PG&E. And then, uh, Saturday is the, uh, next series of dump days. This is going to be at the Castle on Lucerne from seven to three PM. Um, so, uh, yes, anyone from Towne of Lucerne, um, can bring their garbage and see if we can get more tonnage, uh, done. So, um, I'll just leave it at that for now and, uh, we'll close, uh, calendars and go into, uh, closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Closed session item eight point six. Uh, staff is requesting to have that item pulled to a later date to be determined.
Okay. Eight point six is pulled to a later date. Okay. All right. Should I read all of them off? Okay. Here we go. First item is, uh, we have an eight point one, one thirty, Public Employee Evaluation, Chief Public Defender. Eight point two, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council. Eight point three, Employee Evaluation, Public Services Director. Eight point four, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator Carlos, Carlos Torres, Susan Parker, Stephen Carter, Casey Moreno, Pam Samick, and Diana Rico, and Employee Organizations, LCDDA, ALCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. And then eight point five, Con- Conference with Lit, Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, in regards to Well Path Holdings Incorporated et al. And then, uh, eight point six, I'll read it as it is going to be pulled. Uh, Addendum Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D2E1, one potential case. We'll see you after closed session.